Okay, while we're waiting for Chris to sign in, I'm gonna call the meeting to order anyways at 6:31 PM. Housekeeping to do to say that pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order defending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress are encouraged to do so. I don't have the phone number here, or you can follow on NORCAM or on the cable station where we're being streamed live today. So to begin, we'll just do the attendance and just point out that Superintendent Patrick Daly is here, as well as all five members of the school committee. Myself, Scott Buckley, the vice chair, Janine Embriano, as well as Rich McGowan, Diana Boutwell, and I saw that Chris Papa Vasilio also has joined us. Present, so we will begin with public input. If there's anybody from the public that has anything they would like to address that is not on the agenda tonight. I will pause for about five seconds. Okay, hearing none, we're gonna move on to the student report, and we are honored to be joined by Samantha Galvin, a class of 2020 from North Reading and class of 2024 from Harvard University. Samantha, turn it over to you.
Hello. So basically, I think that online classes at first were a little slow to start, but I think that they've definitely been going well lately, picking up a little more as participation has kind of increased. I think a lot of kids are finding it a bit hard to focus on the online classes, but it's definitely better than nothing. I think the majority of kids are definitely excited to be able to still have class and see their classmates, even if it's through Google Hangouts and things like that. Obviously, there isn't really any athletic or art matters to speak on because we can't really do those things. But a lot of the ceramics projects are gonna be released slowly for pickup at a few times, which is nice. So people can go and pick up their work. And yeah, hopefully, we'll be back for fall semester of athletics. I know my spring semester of track got canceled, which is a bit upsetting, but yeah.
Well, thank you. How are you? What are you? What are you missing the most about the second semester? The sports aspect of it, just being with the seniors? I mean, how are you dealing with it?
Yeah, it's more like the typical events that are definitely missed. It's also like the little things and those people that you see at school that you're not necessarily super close friends with, but you see in school that you're missing out on, mostly because we didn't know that that Thursday would be our last day of school. So we didn't really get to say bye to those people. And because we don't know yet, like, if we're gonna get a graduation, what it's gonna look like, when it's gonna be, we don't really know if we're gonna get to say bye to those people. So I think the hardest part is the waiting and the not knowing what's really gonna happen. And even for next year, I know a lot of kids are concerned, a lot of seniors are concerned about, am I even going to be on campus in college? And a lot of people, if they're not gonna be on campus, online learning is incompatible to them. So they might defer a semester or even a full year. So it's a lot of those things that are up in the air that's making it difficult.
Interesting. You know, I promise you, you will have a graduation of some sort. We are, everybody in town is working on that, but with the governor's orders today, hopefully, we can get a little more clarity in some meetings that are happening in the next day or two to hopefully help plan for that. Other comments and questions for Samantha?
Samantha, the last time you were at the meeting, an actual meeting, you brought in your pottery of Ursula. Pick that up yet?
I actually did. It went through the count, and it came out. I did get to see it, but it came out like a week before we left. So I didn't actually get to take it home because I think it was supposed to go in the display case. But hopefully, I'll get to pick that up.
Very good. Well, congratulations on Harvard. Well deserved, imagine.
Other comments?
I'll just say it's so fantastic. She's, you know, Samantha, it's been great working with you all year, or at least half the year officially for me. And it's been great getting to know you a little bit better through these forums and through our meetings together. You've been a great leader and a great asset to work with, and I've really enjoyed our time together. Very proud of you. And as you said, there are gonna be some great plans that we'll have coming out soon for seniors, for graduation, other events, and also for some of those more mundane, you know, picking up not just pottery, but, you know, different students have things in their lockers or things left behind. So we're gonna have some more communication, hopefully, in the next few weeks about that to parents going out. So, but thank you for everything you've done for us, so.
Thank you.
My only other question is, Samantha, like, what were you planning on doing for the summer before you go away? And how are those plans changing?
So I work at Marshalls, and right now, I obviously can't work. And that's, I don't know if I'm still gonna have my position because obviously, they're taking a big loss. So that's a bit stressful because I obviously need money going into college. And I also do an internship at the State House. And so I don't know when I'll get to do that because with the phase plan, I think it's 40% capacity by June 1st. I'm pretty sure if I read that right, and interns probably won't be considered in that bunch. So I might not get to do that either.
Yeah, I mean, the loss, the loss from this pandemic is, you know, it's hard to really quantify. So sorry that it's your last year, but appreciate, you know, you guys doing your best to, you know, try to find the positives the best you can. And so that's gonna be a story to tell in the future, but, you know, best of luck. I mean, you've been an impressive, impressive person at North Reading. And I mean, it's great that you, you know, get to go to a wonderful university. So good luck with that. And thank you. And so.
Have you, has everyone been able to drive by the school and see the fence as of the last couple of days?
I ran by it today.
Really worth a drive by. It's the photos and the sign. It's really, really nice. I think it's a great, a really great effort from really the entire community. I know Mr. Lepret has been involved and the many folks at the school in getting this going. And folks in the town came up with the ideas, and it's been a great, this looks really neat. I think it's, you know, something very special for this class. I think it's great, so.
I think a lot of the emphasis has also been on the seniors. And while I am sad about a lot of the stuff I'm missing out on, I also sympathize with the juniors because I can't imagine how stressful it is with not being certain, like, not getting to talk to your guidance counselor about choosing classes or modifying classes or even just college next year. So I feel like they're getting lost in the shuffle too.
Yeah, there's certainly a lot of that going on across the country. So it's gonna be a different process for applying for everybody, but you're absolutely right. Yeah.
Thank you very much, and.
Well, before you go, real quick, how did your APs go?
Um, it's honestly been a class-by-class basis how well they've gone. My AP Lit exam, I thought, was fine online. It was just an essay, so being online really didn't change that. It was a prompt. You responded to it. But I took AP Bio today, and it was extremely difficult on the online format because just the function of the questions, it's typically a graph or a chart, and scrolling back and forth between typing and looking at the chart was really difficult. And a lot of students have been having trouble submitting answers, but I don't think anyone that I've talked to in North Reading has had that problem. So I think we've been pretty good on that front.
Good, because I've heard there's been some difficulty across the nation with that. So I was just wondering how it went for you. I'm glad it went well.
Okay.
Yeah, we've just, just to follow up on that, we've been looking into that sort of across North Reading. We haven't heard a lot of instances. I have heard a couple of, we'll call them technology-related concerns. But overall, it's part of the shift to, you know, it's better that we were able to proceed and have them, and the students were still able to demonstrate all their knowledge from the great work they've done this year. And, you know, I'd like to think that that, those tech issues are kind of, everyone's experiencing some of that across the country, as you said, Ms. Embriano. So, but it's certainly something that we hope no one has to face anything significant and frustrating.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Samantha. As always, you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to. Nobody ever does, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Okay, so we're moving on. There's no continued business for new business. It seems like the new norm. We always begin with COVID-19 update and how it's impacting the public schools. Turn to you, Dr. Daly.
Yeah, so I think the biggest thing to share with you tonight is just that, you know, the governor's announcement today introduced some more detail around his phases for reopening. We were thinking about how that affects some of the immediate events at our schools. Obviously, students and teachers are out, classes are out. But as I mentioned earlier, it's about figuring out some of those plans to have classrooms emptied, lockers emptied, and to come up with a plan for parents for retrieving some items. You know, this won't involve really coming into the schools, but we have some plans where we're gathering items together and coming up with a safe way to do some curbside kind of pickup where everything is treated respectfully, and it's, you know, you're able to pick it up in a very safe way. We're also looking at ways to have some of the essential staff coming back in order to do some year-end tasks that are required. So it's looking at those guidelines and figuring out the correct numbers for folks to be in the office to maintain social distancing and to follow all the regulations and guidelines that were shared with us. So we've had some meetings with the town officials to figure out the best ways to do this over the next few weeks. And then obviously, the big one for us is figuring out the best plan for graduation and for other ceremonies for the spring. And so we have a meeting later this week, and then we hope to have some more concrete details to share later this week, early next week from the high school about what those plans will look like. So much to consider, and a lot of information there, but nothing, nothing concrete to report in graduation yet, but certainly soon.
Okay, thank you. So as always, we'll just kind of go around, see if there's any comments or questions. We'll go from last to join, I guess. Chris?
Uh, no, no, no questions at this time.
Okay. Diana, any questions or comments?
No, none here.
Janine?
Sorry, it takes me away. No, I'm all set, but thank you.
And Rich?
No, no questions. Thanks.
And, I mean, for me, I had just written out AP exams, and Janine brought that up already. I'd heard some comments about that, and I think there's a lot to be done, you know, a lot, a lot of plans later on. But I think we need to just take them step by step. And I know tomorrow, there's a town, there's a meeting with some officials in town about graduation, and so we'll keep everybody posted.
Okay, great. I'll just give a very quick update on the donations from the, you know, we've done the refund amounts to folks, and parents and families had the option to make a donation. And I just want to report, you know, I've given some individual thank yous to those that have contributed. These folks will be getting, you know, we'll include them in a future school committee packet. Sort of, my thought is just to do like a mass list of, you know, here's all the folks. But the numbers are very promising. So for pre-K, now, this might, these aren't final numbers, and they also may include a few duplicates because I have to go through and make sure, because sometimes people fill it out more than once. But as a rough estimate, about $1,600 in pre-K refunds, I'm sorry, donations to the district. At this time, we have about $9,335 in bus donations and $11,300 in kindergarten. So over $20,000 in donations from our community back in this difficult environment. We really appreciate those contributions and also a plan that we've had. Our business office team has worked very hard to get that information out. So I just want to give that update and thank everyone for their work on this.
That's wonderful to hear. Thank you to the community. Thank you, guys. Hey, I think the only other, the only other thing I would point out is that I think there's a lot of people that are trying to honor the seniors as well. And so I know that, and I always, I always don't say the name right, right, but Mr. Serinkah, you know, I think has done, you know, quite a bit in trying to publicize the seniors, you know, on community connection pages. You mentioned the posters that a lot of people helped to put up on other seniors. And so, I mean, again, I think, I think the community is pulling together very well here. And so the fact that they're also donating money back when, you know, I mean, it looks like what, $21,000, $22,000 is pretty impressive, so.
Very impressive, so.
Okay.
Very good.
Are you gonna talk to us about human sexuality, Dr. Daly?
I'm not gonna go into too much detail, but the, the, every spring, as you know, we do the human sexuality units in our, in our health classes. The fifth grade unit usually involves, we preview a film for the parents, and then we do the unit in June. And so there is nothing that mandates when this needs to be taught, what grade levels, and which folks. And meeting with our health teachers across the district and the principals, we feel that this is a very delicate topic and one that is best presented face-to-face. And so my thought is that I would send out a letter to parents explaining that we are at the secondary level going to focus on healthy relationships and not as much on the human sexuality component this spring. And for the fifth grade, the idea is that we would just move that unit into the sixth grade. So currently, the sixth grade reviews the unit. This time, they would, basically, they would get that information for the first time at grade six. And what I would do is I would include the option for anyone that has questions. They can reach out to our health curriculum coordinator, who would be happy to support parents if parents wanted to share some resources and teach some at home. Because it is that thing, there are certainly fifth graders who are very much ready for this information now and need some of the information over the summer. And so we will have those resources available. I'm not inclined to show the video or distribute the link or get into that because we don't feel that that's the most productive way to do this. But we do have a lot of other resources that we would share out. So again, the idea is that I would share a letter to parents that would explain our process for not, not teaching the human sexuality curriculum this spring via remote learning. We think it's more appropriate to do in the fall in the face-to-face setting. So I just wanted to make sure everyone, because school committee is, you know, there is policy around this and around parental notification. I just thought it was prudent to bring it forward for discussion and just to vote to accept that concept.
Okay, so in terms of discussion, Mr. McGowan, any thoughts?
No, I don't think so. I think it makes sense. It's, it does seem like a difficult subject to do on a remote learning situation.
Mrs. Embriano?
Oh, I am definitely inclined to agree with that. It's a touchy subject. And some kids, like Superintendent Daly said, handle it better. And there's some that don't. So I think it should be something that is a face-to-face, not a virtual learning.
Mrs. Boutwell?
Patrick, I actually, as a parent of an incoming fifth grader or a fifth grader right now, incoming sixth grader, I appreciate the proposal because I think it makes a lot of sense and puts mine at ease for me personally, as well as probably a lot of parents. So thanks.
Very good.
And Mr. Papa Vasilio?
I'll just agree. This is good thinking and staving off issues by planning ahead. So I think it's a great idea.
And I'll agree, I mean, with, also a parent of a fifth grader. And I think my wife about on day, I think on day like five or six of remote learning, she said, wait, are we gonna have to teach them about human sexuality if this continues? And I said, I don't know if that's gonna happen. And then we started thinking about it. So happy that we're not gonna be doing the full training. Not that we won't bring you any of the training, but happy that we're not gonna be showing the video ourselves. So happy to have the school support for that next year. And I agree, it should be in person, so. Okay, so you want to vote to accept the proposal on the recommendations? Dr. Daly?
I'll make a motion. I move to accept the administration recommendation to defer portions of the human sexuality curriculum until the 2020-2021 school year.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimous, 5-0. Thank you, everyone. And we're gonna, we're gonna skip over the NREA because we have to go into executive session to talk about that. Then we will come out of executive session to vote on that one at the end. But I do want, rather than pausing right now, I'd rather just get through the rest of the agenda, and then we can just come back only for the NREA vote at the end. So for routine matters, we have some minutes. Janine, I don't know if you are willing to help us walk through the minutes. Apparently, she's not.
Sorry, I forgot to turn my mic on. All right. I make a motion to accept the minutes for the May 4th session, open session for the budget workshop as written.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I didn't see.
Roll call vote. Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes 5-0 unanimous. Thank you. Janine?
I make a motion to accept the open session school committee meeting for May 5th as written.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote again. Janine?
Oh, hold on. I'm trying to get all smooth. Wasn't that an executive session, not an open session?
No, the first one is open. The next one will be the executive.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll do the vote. Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. So passes 5-0. I don't have in front of you to be another one, Janine?
Yeah, one more. For the executive session on May 5th, for this North Reading School Committee meeting, I make a motion to accept as written.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. 5-0 unanimous. Thank you very much. For budget update, we don't have Michael here and nothing for staffing, I would assume. Correct, Dr. Daly?
Correct, done at this time.
Okay, bids and donations. Rich, would you mind handling this one?
Sure. I moved that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation totaling $600 from North Reading High School parents that was donated back to the athletic department at the high school. The amounts of $400 from Maya Kuti's Street Combs and $200 from Philip and Carolyn Kopolis.
Second.
Okay, and just as discussion, I would say for the spring athletic fee, since nothing happened, we had voted that we would give all of this back, and these, these kind families donated that to the schools as well. So we appreciate that. For roll call vote, Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Thank you very much. Subcommittee updates. We had finance planning team meeting. We actually had two finance planning team meetings, but we had May 7th. And then we, the one that we scheduled for yes for tomorrow got moved to this morning because they wanted to discuss some updates. Maybe I'll start with the update. So the very bad news is we, Michael Gilberto had, the town administrator, had more discussions with our local politicians and the way, we had been keeping the chapter 70 aid at level funding for next year. We had been keeping, we had projected a 5% loss in funds for, for other state aid. And our local rep said that keeping level funded would be a rosy scenario, a prudent, I think the words that were used were a prudent, for prudent planning, we should anticipate a 10% loss for both of those line items. And a doomsday scenario would be a 20% loss for each of them. So in terms of a dollar amount, a 10% loss in chapter 78 would be more than $700,000 for the town and another $100,000 for the, the other state aid, for a total of $800,000 for the town. Now, that is, you know, about two-thirds of that would be coming to the school. So it would be a big loss, but I would say, and this is why we have a finance planning team, in the same meeting when that was projected, the town administrator, the town finance director had already met to try to figure out some other solutions. They talked to the finance committee, and at the meeting, there were a lot of, there were some other revenues that were put on the table to hopefully offset this. You know, I don't, I don't know how much detail we want to go into, but we are looking at potentially using free cash to pay for certain expenses that are typically on the budget. So things like retirement, things like, we're looking at maybe snow and ice. And there are some one-time revenues potentially, like for cell phones, we get some revenue that, you know, that we're, they're thinking about putting back in. So ultimately, at the end of the day, for the schools, that will mean a bigger deficit than we had before. But at the last school committee meeting, I think we got down to about $140,000 deficit. I think even losing the $800,000 of revenue with the revenue being put back in, I think we're looking at about a $280,000 deficit at this point in time. So a catastrophic planning, but a, you know, an okay solution at least to start. And that is without snow and ice. So we're continuing to talk about where this leads us. But, you know, just, just to update, I mean, I appreciate the work that the finance planning team's done. I appreciate the town administrator and finance director in particular for, you know, giving us that information before we had the school committee meeting and before the select board met tonight. We were just gonna share that overall, and I think, I think a lot of communities are doing different things. Some are doing 112 budgets, some are doing, you know, doomsday projections, some are doing rosy projections. I think after the discussion, I feel comfortable that the 10%, you know, from our local state representatives is the right way to go right now, but that is the update from finance planning. And I don't know if Janine or Dr. Daly have any updates that I left out.
No, you stated it very well. Thank you.
I agree. I just want to echo what you said there, Scott. I think it's a difficult year. It's a difficult number. And I do appreciate the efforts of everyone in town trying to find every possible way to not have this impact students or staff to the extent possible, you know. So I think, you know, the cuts that we're gonna have to make won't be, won't be easy for sure on either the town or the school side. But I do think that we are trying to find every possible way to make that, you know, the least impactful it can possibly be on what we're trying to do every day. So I appreciate the efforts that they've done, and I think we are set, I believe, to move forward with our vote on the budget on June 1st. That is our plan at this time. The other meeting date that I think changed from what's in the schedule here is we've now set up for, for next Thursday, I believe, for the next meeting. So that's a slight change as well to that. So again, it's a good, it's a good team to have in place, and it's not the greatest news, but we're gonna, we're going to certainly make the best of it with this group working on it. So thank you.
Yeah, and I would just say, I mean, I think, I think sometimes people come in with different, you know, thought processes and objectives on this. But what I would say is universal for these meetings is prioritizing services to students and to the town on the town side as well, and prioritizing, you know, keeping as many jobs as we possibly can. And I don't think there's any guarantee that there won't be any cuts at all. I think that's the reality of this, but I appreciate that even though, you know, we want to be conservative year over year, I think everybody understands that the amount of loss of revenue that we're thinking about versus other years is something that does. is something that does mandate, you know, one-time exceptions being made. And so I appreciate that. This is nothing that, you know, we had to beg and plead for. This is, you know, people in the town saying, you know, we understand that this is something that can't be, you know, could not have been anticipated, and I feel like everybody's working together to try to find the solution that is as least painful as possible. So. And other than any comments or questions from the people that weren't in that meeting this morning? Rich? Diana? And Rich?
I just gonna say, I, the hardest thing about this whole pandemic, and Samantha touched on it earlier, is after two-plus months, we still don't know what's gonna happen. And I just echo your thoughts that, you know, everyone's doing a great job just trying to anticipate and plan as best we can. So it is frustrating for everyone. Every, every aspect of life is on hold, and so we, till we get some answers, and they may or may not be forthcoming, so it's a, it's a difficult situation, so.
And realistically, I don't think we'll have a state budget by June 1st, and so the question is, what do we do? But we're, we're working. Diana, any comments or questions?
No, I mean, Rich articulated very well what I'm feeling as well, so it's just difficult. It's hard to hear. The unknown is frustrating, so thanks for the update.
Uh, Chris, any comments or thoughts?
Not to be unoriginal, but just the, the same thing, you know. It's impossible to know right now if we're, if we're at the top of a very large ball to come or if we're most of the way through it, and that's, that's challenging.
Well, but, but what I would just say is, I mean, what's, but you always try to, try to find the good in bad situations. And I would just say one thing that's been very apparent is, you know, the leadership. And we've talked, you know, a bit about Dr. Daly and Michael. I mean, I can reiterate them as well about how great their leadership has been. But, you know, on the town side as well, you know, I think Michael Gilberto and, you know, Liz, the finance director, you know, the finance, finance committee, the, you know, the select board. I mean, we really are blessed to have a lot of great leaders in this town, many of whom are donating their time to. I mean, when you're looking at select board and, you know, everybody on the committee here and, you know, the finance committee. And so, you know, it's challenging, but, you know, for people that are listening or following this, I just hope they understand that, you know, everybody has the best intention. Everybody's trying to keep, you know, as many people employed as we can and keep providing all the services that the town people and the students, you know, expect and deserve. But it's gonna be a challenging year. It's gonna be a challenging couple of years, to be honest, so.
I agree. I would echo that. Just remind everyone that we've been meeting, all the town officials and leaders have been meeting weekly at least since a couple of weeks before this really hit home for everybody. So since early March, and they've been, it's been such a great team to work with, and, you know, I really feel supported. And, you know, they really understand that the, the school and the, and the needs of the school are unique, but yet it's great to be able to brainstorm and troubleshoot everything from, you know, what do we do with opening parks and playgrounds to having people return to work, to the financial aspects with such a great, great town leadership. So I really appreciate that. Thanks for mentioning it, Scott. It's very, very true.
Okay, so in terms of the next subcommittee meeting, I think the only one on the agenda is finance planning team, which will be meeting on the 28th, next Thursday at 8:00 AM. And any administrative report, Dr. Daly?
I believe I've covered that at this time, so.
Okay, any correspondence?
None at this time.
Okay, and the future business, our next meeting will be June 1st. That will be the CPAC presentation as well as hopefully a budget vote. That's the plan for right now. And if there is nothing else, what we're going to do is we're going to move into an executive session for the purposes of discussing negotiations with union, unions. And then we'll come back, hopefully in about 10 to 15 minutes, to the same meeting in order to, you know, take an official vote on a memorandum of understanding. And so I need a motion to move into executive session.
I'll move that we move into executive session for the purposes of discussing union negotiations.
Second.
Okay, we need to do a roll call. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, so it's five zero unanimous. So we're gonna leave here. Dr. Daly has sent us a link for the executive. We'll reconvene there, and then we'll come back here in probably 10 to 15 minutes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I'm looking to make sure everyone here, we're gonna be coming back into open session. And I see for the purpose of, Chris, Diana, Janine, and Rich here, Dr. Daly here as well. And so we were discussing negotiations with unions, and...
Janine just dropped out.
We'll wait for Janine to come back before we take a vote. Janine is back in. So we were in executive session discussing negotiations with unions, and we do have one motion coming out of this. I turn it over to Mr. McGowan.
Sure, I move that we vote to accept the memorandum of agreement between the North Reading Education Association and the North Reading School Committee as written, or I should say as amended to including, including a end date of August 31st, 2020, so that we can revisit these issues at the beginning of the new year.
Okay, can I have a second?
A second.
Okay, we're gonna do a roll call vote, and Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
And Janine is having trouble getting her mic to work, but she typed into me aye as well. So she, and I'm a aye as well, so passes five to zero unanimous. Are there any other topics for the open session meeting? Okay. Hearing none, then, if I can have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn. Second.
Okay, what was that? Okay, so Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Janine votes aye as well, and I vote aye, so it's five to zero passes. Thank you, everyone.
Hey, guys, this is Jill from the transcript, just before you go.
Yes.
So just to clarify, you're not sharing any details about the agreement that you just approved?
Oh, we can, we can share the details. Sorry, we can, we can go through that. Did you, Patrick, is that something that we're sharing, and can you give a copy?
I can, yeah, I haven't shared that at this time in the packet, but it's, this agreement is just the details of the, it's a memorandum of understanding between the teachers' association and the school committee about the teachers working in contract during the remote learning phase. So I can, yeah, I can share something with you about that.
Okay, that would, that would be helpful. Hard to report that you guys just approved something that this public didn't get to hear.
Yes, and it's a public contract, so I assume the memorandum would be public as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's similar to all the other contract. We don't, we don't produce the entire contract in the meetings, but, but we can, we can share some of that information.
And, and, and Jill, just to talk, I mean, it was, the point of it is just, you know, for how things may be changing slightly due to being remote. So there's, there's nothing, there's not, usually when we report, we talk about the length of the contract, raises, things like that. None of that is, none of that is impacted by this. This is just more, this is just more how it's, how the day-to-day is working.
Okay.
So, okay.
Thank you for clarifying. Thank you very much, guys.
I will share that with you some point tomorrow. I'm just gonna check in about the, do we have an agreement on the amendment with the teachers' union, and then I can share with you.
Okay, great.
All right.
Thanks a lot. All right, take care.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye-bye.